I will start recording now. Go ahead. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody, to the Municipal Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 16th, 2022. Call this meeting to order at 9:32. additions or deletions from the agenda? Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? No, seeing none, we'll move on. Adoption of the agenda for February 16th, 2022 Municipal Planning Commission. Can I get the motion to adopt? Karen Martin. Is that motion all in favor? Period. Thank you. We go on to four adoption of minutes from the December 15th, 2021 Municipal Planning Commission. Any changes or anything to the minutes in comments? I only had, I have one comment in the list of present people. Kara's last name is missing a T. Which is probably not an issue, but just worth mentioning.
Thank you for that, and I will make that change.
So can I get a motion to adopt as amended, please? Cindy, thank you. One favor. I don't know if we have to vote on that or not, but all good. All right, moving on to five. Point one, NOAC subdivision time extension request. Mr. Patient, are you going to speak on that?
I am, and be looking for support from Richard, who is also online with us. Very good. So. Thank you. So this is an extension request to a subdivision application that was originally filed and approved by the MPC in 2018. A time extension was granted in 2019 and again in September of 2020, all for a period of one year. Mr. Nowak, who is also joining us this morning, came in and made an application to have an additional extension due to numerous extenuating circumstances. This was brought before the MPC at the December 15th meeting and was held over to allow Mr. Nowak the opportunity to come speak on his behalf at this particular hearing. So this application dates back, and I've had numerous conversations with Mr. Nowak. This is in regards to subdivision in the northeast corner of town, and I have included a map as part of the staff report. This lies just south of Dunham and about a block west of Main Street. I've included in the report the original transmittal of decision from the MPC from 2018 that includes all the conditions that were outlined as part of that approval process. We have spoken on this numerous times. I've spoken with Mr. Nowak numerous times on this particular application. It's a fairly extensive file. I would suggest there were numerous complications and delays that were many of them beyond Mr. Nowak's control. A number of delays related to our own staff, and I'm certainly not throwing anyone under the bus. And some delays in relation to his engineer who happened to unfortunately pass away during the process. So Mr. Nowak has come back to seek an additional extension. You will note that the MPC or that the council through the MPC has the ability to grant a one-year extension. As part of this report that was presented in December, administration had recommended an extension to December 14th, 2022. Did not change that date on this particular request. For one simple reason, and that is based on the outcome of tonight's council votes on amalgamation. I didn't want to extend it past a potential incorporation date, just to alleviate any potential issues that that might bring forward. So really, Richard and I have spoke about this on numerous occasions, including yesterday as well. And we are actually recommending that that extension be granted to Mr. Nowak.
Okay. Any comments, questions on the motion? Already the motion, I guess, do I first? Karen, go ahead.
There we go. Now I'm unmuted. I just have a quick question, and it might not be this development specific, but is there some sort of an incentive for people to, or developers to actually complete their development? And this is, we're working on four years now. So I mean, it might not be this development. I understand that there's extenuating circumstances. But is there any incentive for them to complete it in time? Without asking for more extensions?
If I might, Mr. Chair. So no real incentives from the municipality's perspective. However, should the, should the approval lapse, then obviously extensions are required, and there's always a risk that the MPC does not approve the extension, which would put the applicant back into having to refile the application and start over essentially. So no financial incentives essentially from the municipality, if that's the question.
Yeah, Sean, I did prepare a quick presentation if there is a need to outline what, what happened because actually that subdivision would be completed in 2019 if there was be no issues outside my control, which related related to the town. And I have summary of it. I have a summary of the progress we made. We are ready to sign development agreement. I had contractors set up. We have material ordered. We had letter of credit ready. We had insurance, liability insurance. We had everything ready, so. It is, it is pretty sad where we are right now, but it's not for lack of trying. Let's put it this way. And if you would like to view my presentation, I can outline, and I do have supporting material for everything I present, so.
If you want to go ahead, that's fine. It's.
Sean. So I do open share tray. This is what I do.
Yeah.
And.
Share content.
And PowerPoint. So can you see PowerPoint presentation?
Not yet.
Does it look like it's it working through?
Don't see it.
Okay, so I wonder if I go back.
At the top of your screen, you should see a button for share content.
Okay, so.
It's a little arrow.
What about if I would send you that presentation by PDF, and would you be able to bring it up?
Yeah.
Okay, then it would not have obviously PowerPoint features, but I could at least talk to it because I lost the screen altogether right now.
You want to send it to me, Eric?
Yeah, I'll do that right now. My, oh, yeah, I see screen here. Just a second. I just moved through something. So new email. CEO. Presentation. Insert. Touch file. Okay, it should be on its way. And I'm trying to get back to screen. Here it is. So you're saying, and oh, here, choose what to share entire screen window, Microsoft Ed. So entire screen, I guess, yes?
Yeah.
Sure. But it's. Why is it not? Okay, here. And now if I go to PowerPoint, can you see now PowerPoint?
Yes, I can see it. Looks good.
Okay, okay, very good. So I panicked too quickly. Okay, so we are talking obviously about that specific development. This is a summary condition, conditional approval granted September 19, 2018. Really, the main objective is to sign development agreement within, within a year, and then within develop an agreement to complete subdivision within two years. So just wanted to show the dynamics which led to first extension, quick legend. Anything in blue is our objectives for specific year. Anything which will come up in green will be progressing towards that's objective, and everything in red will be drifting away from those objectives. So let's look at what, what we've done in sense of getting that subdivision going. So we had approval in 2018. We prepaid levies in around sixteen, over just over 60,000 doors. We engage engineers, psychon engineering, main person behind that firm. What's his name?
Ivan Krabko.
Yeah, yeah, Ivan Krabko here ago, and we submitted our plans already in early 2019. We selected that we had bids for contracting, selecting local contractor or early excavating, and as well, we asked him to procure the materials. We established, I mean, we completed utility right away in documents which were accepted by, by Adco and Fortis. Then we surveyed property and prepared subdivision registration. So all those papers were ready to go at that time. Just matter of sending to town. Forty off-site improvements design were completed, and we prepaid construction of over 20,000 dollars on that way. On that off-site improvement, liability insurance was purchased, and we had a letter of credit going with, with Canadian Western Bank. Okay, we're ready to go and complete the subdivision by October 2019 with construction starting August 1st. Things which did not work out well. We had multiple revisions. Some of it was our, my engineer for misunderstanding directions he was getting through the planner from, from MPE. We found that process not being the most, the most effective of third-party translating information for us and so on, and, and, and there were some, some problems from my engineer misunderstanding some of the guidance. So there were some delays obviously in a resubmission of documents because they had to be redone. Then we had delayed and inconsistent responses from the planner. And at that time, as well, we were surprised by expectation planner brought on behalf of town to us. At that time, I, I don't know who decided, but there was decision that there is a need for off-site improvement of the sewer line to upsize the sewer line despite the fact that was sufficient size to serve as that development town wanted to upsize that sewer line. And they ask us to engineer that, and my engineer did that. He charged me money for it, which I was able to recapture back in 2020, but bottom line, when, when development agreement was draft presented to us, that became very clear that town wants us to pay for off-site improvements, and then asked to recharge back without very clear commitment of us being able to, by being paid by specific time. But the main, the main problem was that town wanted that, that cost was between 50 to 60,000 dollars for engineering and construction of that off-site improvement. And town was asking for me to assume liability for it for two years. They wanted me to increase my security deposit to account for that additional 50,000 dollars, which almost constituted 20% of the total, of the total budget. And then as well, request came from the planner to pave the road from 20 to X intersection to, to the end of my property that we were able to address year on year, but again, that was something which came in unforeseen, delayed the process because obviously there was significant communication around any of those items. And unfortunately extended the whole period. And when we, when we in August, beginning of August, when my contractor supposed to start construction, and we didn't have DA in hand yet. He just accepted a job in BC and moved on for the rest of the season. So bottom line, our objectives for that year have not been met. Here is a sample of couple of messages from the planner from, I will let you read it, but I'm not going to make big deal out of it. Bottom line, this is what we are dealing with. They'll give you a minute just to read it through, and I'll move on. So on June 20, on June 24, we were, we are very close to sign development agreement, and then at the beginning of August, we are still arguing about items which were in that development agreement. And here is couple of follow-ups from, from Jerry. Trying to reconcile situation. So second one from February 20, 28th is after he left the position already, so. Okay. So second extension dynamics, objective was for 2020 signed DA in the summer, complete construction in 2021. Initially, when we were thinking about 2020, we're, we approach earlier, we asked him to reprice everything. And we did get cost estimates which were significantly higher what we expected. So we revised that to 2021 construction for objectives. Things which were going for us, town abandoned an idea of sewer line upsizing, so that, that would not, would was not anymore a restricting factor in signing DA. And as well, Dunham Lane upgrade, not fronting the property did not come up anymore, so. Things working against us. We had illness and passing of Ivan Krabko. He is, he started being sick September and passed away on October 16 of 2020. His firm went into a state which really complicated transition of engineering because billing was not completed, and so we ran into significant delays. Finally, that firm merged with Watts Consulting. And when Watts Consulting assumes a contract, we had issue of major increase in a cost of engineering if to finish off the project. And took us a couple months to resolve that. Then COVID came in and added additional uncertainty. Richard is, as a meeting, he can talk to, if there's any question, there is wrong topographic for subdivision next door, which resulted in taking down a concrete swell and rebuilding it. At the same time, Richard was right, asking, are your readings wrong as well? It turned out that they were not wrong. They were right on, but, but it was valid question at that time, which resulted in another round of negotiations because based on dry, that back lane, town, the way it was presented to my, through what's to me, that town was asking for rebuilding back alley, and they, they said there is no way they're going to support that, and it took a while to figure that out. The final meeting we had with MPE was in September, end of September, but at that time, we had already to ask for, for extension for 2020. And obviously as well, there was significant increase in material costs, which resulted in delaying objective for, to construction in 2021. Then we moved to 2021. Through the meeting we had with MPA in September of 2020, idea of modified development agreement came up. It was first time discussed at that time. Then I shared idea with Richard, and we had some discussion around it. And, and I came to Richard in, in early 2021 and say, let's, let's try to do that if there is support from the town. And if, and the idea of modified development, development agreement was to delay registration of lots and reduce, reduce the required security deposit. So we would complete the work, all major work, all underground, deep and shallow services, complete the road up to the second, second layer of Asheville. And at that time, ask for registration of lots for resale, and new deposit level would be established. So we would start with reduced deposit to ensure that we are in compliance, and then after we complete all the work, we would come back and say, okay, let's assess the deposit required now for whatever left to, to maintain and complete. So that would result in significant lower, lower deposit requirements which would help in, in with uncertainty around what's, what's happening in 2021. And get ready for construction in 2022. So things for going for us, we finally got our plans approved. Modified development concept was discussed, and we had commitment to finalize terms of modified development agreement for our meeting on April 15 with Richard, Michelle, and Judy McKenzie. Thanks working against us, continued uncertainty around COVID. Further increase in material costs and supply concerns started coming in. Some of the materials were simply required significant lead times. And I didn't feel that at that time we were priority because I don't think we were priority considering all amalgamation activities happening, and, and that makes sense. I, I was not really complaining about it when Michelle said it will take a couple months. I said, no problem. Because we are now planning to construct in 2022. We just wanted to enter into development agreement. And when August came in, I, I started inquiring why I'm not getting any updates on, on what we agreed on April 15 to find out that that key members of the team from April 15 were not available, not available anymore. So I was, I didn't have much choice but to ask for, for extension in August, when I was hoping to sign that modified development, development agreement. And just to, to ensure you, to ensure members of commission, but this is not the only project we work, we've done. We started and completed other projects in Foothills County. And we, we were as well busy somewhere else. We, so it's not like we completely closed our operation and then want to to deliver the goods as per our promise. Bottom line, when I look back, when I did that summary for today, we would have a subdivision completed in 2019. Everything was in place to complete that in 2019. This is all I had.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions in regards to the presentation? Richard, did you want to speak to this taller?
No, a lot of the events, I, there's a lot of information going back and forth, but for the most part, would we recommend just extending the subdivision?
Okay, patient, go ahead, Karen Martin.
Again, this may not be the specific development, but when we extended the development for the other ones on Dunham Lane, which I know there's another one coming up today too. And we said, we really got to stop doing this. We got to keep them, hold them to their word. And as an NBC, we said we got to keep developers to their word so that it doesn't impact the local residents and the town and the infrastructure of the town. And now we're just going to yeah, say, okay, we're gonna approve an extension again, like at some point, we need to stick to our own word here.
Want to speak to that? Cindy, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem. There's no doubt that we've had transition or planning department that have led to a lot of problems here. I think that was clearly outlined in the presentation. I'm a little concerned about offsite levies and paving of the road and those discussions. So I'd like to hear more from CAO maybe outside of this meeting. Because I thought offsite levies were a simple 14,000 an acre, and you pay it and you go. And so all these projects on the outside, I don't really understand. And paving of Dunham Lane has come up on every subdivision along there, and there seems to be no clear answer as to who's in charge of which, and I think we need to get that figured out. I get worried, to be honest, when you talk about reduced securities because that, you know, is a high risk for the town. So I'm, I'm very concerned hearing that, but I'm, I'm fine granting the time extension. Because I think it is our best option here. I am a little concerned, and maybe you might want to speak to it. The property has been for sale on and off a number of times. So if we grant this extension, is the true motivation to to get building on it, or is this just to make it more marketable, to put it back on, you know, on MLS? I'm not sure on that. So those are my thoughts.
Yeah, property, property been for sale only once. There was extension granted. I think it was for three months, an extension granted. At, at that time, that was for sale with approved engineering plans with assumption if there would be interest in the party, that party would sign development agreement and proceed with development agreement. So it would not, would not prevent from delivering the product we suppose, supposed to be 13 lots subdivision. Are there intention of mine to resell it? If, if that would be intention, that product would be marketed right now with limited inventory and has not been on the market for, for 2021.
Thank you. Peter, Paul has his hand up. Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I guess kind of addressing these repetitive extensions, or maybe something to look at would be an unlimited number of extensions requests going forward. That might be an incentive for developers to complete this work in a timely fashion. Just noticing when you go up and down some of these areas where these lots, the developer should be taking care of these lots, making sure they're mowed, taken care of, no noxious weeds, no garbage being dumped in these areas. So that should be part of their, their commitment. And offsite levies are quite common with the number of municipalities that I've worked with over the last 20 years. So it's something that the developer needs to be aware of, and these upgrades to the infrastructure because going in there with heavy equipment, going down back lanes with utilities and stuff like that, that's damaging the town's infrastructure that's already there. So that's part of, I think, these offsite levies and the security deposits that we should be asking for upfront, so.
Yeah. Security deposit, the way it designed really, as per my understanding, it's to ensure that because most of the developers, they want to market their lots right away. So a subdivision is registered, I can market my lot. This is the reason I need to place 125% of my, of my estimated cost of completing subdivision in form of deposit to ensure that if I sell the lots to, to individuals, and I decide to move on, those individuals are not left in, in limbo. And town has resources to complete that subdivision on my behalf. So whatever promises are made to the buyers, they're, they're looked after. So idea of reduce deposit was on the fact that we are not able to register subdivision until the main work is completed. So we cannot sell any of those laws. So we, we continue investment in the land. We continue that investment as per engineering demands and, and meet all the certificate requirements. If we don't, we need to redo that work. We cannot sell. We cannot sell anything on that land. And and when we complete the work, this is where we request. So this is a difference. It's between increased regular deposit, which is one twenty five of the value of of the estimated value of the cost associated with completing subdivision versus reduced deposit to ensure the compliance and things like that happening on the lots. But I cannot sell the lots until I complete that work. Whereas on regular one twenty five, I can sell lots right away after signing development agreements. I can start pre-selling, this is what most developers want. The reason I I I don't need that, because we have almost fifty lots in Turner Valley. Consumption on the lots on subdivision next door, been only three lots in period of two years. So as you want developers to complete their work, you need to be aware as as well that if developers go bankrupt doing work associated with Turner Valley, and there've been number of them going bankrupt, as you're aware, that's not very good for the town either. So someone responsible like myself, when they think through the cause, think through, I never had issues with any of my subdivision from the financing perspective for some reason, because we are conservative. We do not go and do something not thinking it through. So one of the reasons I asked for a reduced deposit with extended with inability to sell my lots, because I know I would have problems selling my lots right now in in the town of Turner Valley. But those developments until fifty percent of lots in next door is sold, I will have problems selling it. And I am not, I am not a house builder. I just wanted you to be aware, there's demands of the town. But if you want developers to to work with you, you need to understand that inventory of the lots and possibility of them failing is pretty high. None of my project has any financing on it. I I do all the cash, cash. There is no financing on the land, there is no financing on 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 the work. So I can afford keeping project for three, four years. As as it happened, I don't need to panic as comparing to some of the developers who are seventy percent maybe financed. So what you were asking, what are incentives for developers to finish? Most of the incentive is they have pretty significant debt behind the property they purchased. And they need to service that debt. And that's incentive enough for them to complete the project in most cases.
Very good. Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, maybe if I might, Mr. Chairman, just address Ms. Martin's comments about slowing the town growth down or slowing us down in terms of development. If I guess all I could say to that really is, I suppose if if the MPC chose to not grant the extension, it certainly doesn't help move us forward. In fact, that may in fact slow us down as well. So, you know, just a sidebar to this, we haven't done a lot of work either on, you know, Mr. Noak's request on a modified development agreement. Because without the extension, that would work, that's work that just would be lost at this point. So really, you know, we're looking to have the extension granted and then we can work with Mr. Noak. And I don't want to make any commitments in terms of a modified development agreement. It was not part of those conversations. And we would have to definitely revisit that under today's guise. But you know, we do think there's value in granting it. And and I think Mr. Noak's been pretty clear in some of the reasoning why. And we just like to see him move forward.
I have a question in regards to the extension. Do we have a time limit on it, considering automation is up and coming?
Yes, in fact, I, if you notice in the staff report, the request is to grant the extension to December fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Didn't see that, okay, thank you. To Councilor Holiday, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd be happy to put the motion on the table for option one, approve the extension of the subdivision application. Oh, one eighteen S D approval for a period of twelve months.
If I might, Councilor Holiday, when we did the staff report for December fourteenth or fifteenth MPC meeting, it was twelve months. So I've left the date in as December fourteenth twenty twenty two, as I explained earlier, so we don't get it tangled up with potential incorporation date. So if you would engage a friendly amendment, and I probably should have changed that, my apologies, to extend it to December.
Fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Yep, I'm happy to have that changed. So approval for until December fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Motion on the table, any any conversation in regards to the motion? Karen, go ahead, Martin.
Just a real quick question, are there conditions on that approval? Other than the time?
See your patients.
No, I don't believe so, just the conditions that were originally outlined in the MPC approval in twenty eighteen.
All right. No one else, we have a motion on the table to accept the extension. All those in favor? Why, that's passed, thank you. Moving on.
So Sean and and the team, I would like to thank you for for ability to speak to the commission and appreciate your your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Okay, moving on to five point two. Country Meadows Phase Five Subdivision Time Extension Request. C O patients, are you going to speak on this one as well?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I'm not. And I was just sitting here thinking, I'm looking forward to the day when Judy's back with his full time and can speak for it. This one, I'm actually going to have Mr. Beltran speak to. He has been avidly involved in this file with Turner Development. So Richard, if you would.
All right. Hey, Sean. So this time extension that's being requested is a little bit different situation than than the previous subdivision. The developer has completed their construction substantially. They've put down their the first lift of asphalt. They have some minor deficiencies that they can be rectified next year. But in order for the town to support endorsement, to sign off, we technically need the extension granted. They're ready to go. They contact me constantly. And I'm sure they contact Sean about getting things moving forward. So like I said, the the construction is done. They just need to have the extension so that we can, the town can endorse.
Richard, any questions or comments on? Yes, from anybody? Eric Martin, go ahead.
I just want to say like this developer has made a big effort to stay on track and make efforts. And I I completely support the extension for this guy. I just think that he shows a lot more effort in meeting his timelines and not blaming it on COVID and the increase in plywood costs.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing anything? Can I get a motion? Eric, go ahead.
Actually, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. So I might not be able to give you that motion until I can pull it up. Somebody else has it in front of them.
I have it, I can read it off for you if you like.
Perfect, thanks, Chris.
To accept, correct?
Yes, to accept.
That the MPC accept the application of subdivision approval extension and that the MPC accept that administration is satisfied, the conditions of subdivision approval, that a condition has been completed, is no longer required or will be completed for the recent listed. Motion on the table, any comments on the motion?
Is there a is there a timeline on the extension?
C O patients or Richard, can you speak on it?
Yeah, it would just be for for a year. But like I said, the developer is ready to go. I have to double check that they've sent us all the documents. But I think you'll be able to have endorsement within the next week or two.
Okay, just just a question.
Very good, thank you. So we have a motion on the table. No further comments, all in favor of accepting the motion to for the extension? We've got enough, thank you, that's passed, very good. All right. Here. Five point three. MPC Staff Report for one hundred DeKalb Road. C O patients, is that you this time or?
That actually will be Miss Sobe.
Great. Where's Becky?
Hello, good morning.
Morning.
If I can, share my screen. Can everyone see that? And also, too, I'll just say in advance, if you can't hear me at any point, please wave or interrupt. I know the audio tends to have a mind of its own, so let me know. Again, good morning, my name is Becky, I'm with Urban Systems and here to present on the subdivision application on behalf of the town's planning department. The application is for a subdivision to create a new five acre parcel at one hundred DeKalb Road. This will result in the remaining lands to the east, that eastern portion there, which is about four point four one acres as a remainder lot. The applicant and owner of the subject lands is the town of Turner Valley. The discussion today is to make a decision whether to approve the proposed subdivision. So I'll start with the background and context. So this is an approximate map here that shows that the subject site, it comprises nine point four one acres, located again at one hundred DeKalb Road. The parcel is currently zoned Public Service District under the Land Use Bylaw. The applicants proposing to subdivide off the five acres as shown in the map here in the dashed red with the remainder lands created to the east there. So I'm now just going to jump to the tentative plan. And so, yeah, as you can see here, it's along DeKalb Road with the remainder lot along DeKalb and the proposed five acres here, along Calkins Place and the main street there. I did also want to note, the municipal reserve designation will be removed from the five acre portion of land previously approved by council through the M R removal process in accordance with the requirements of the M G A or the Municipal Government Act. I also did want to clarify that the municipal reserve is not a land use district or zoning as we would see in the land use by law. Zoning determines land use and provides the set of parameters that development must follow. And again, the municipal development plan provides direction on those land uses within town. Municipal Reserve is a title designation that's given in accordance with the requirements of section six six one of the Municipal Government Act and registered through land titles. So that's actually designated on title. So for policy and regulation review, to ensure alignment with the town statutory documents, it is within the development authorities discretion to request further information and supporting studies to support future land use by law amendments. So that's again zoning to rezone the lands. The studies would indicate whether the lands are suitable for that type of development that that district is proposed for. And subject to rezoning approval, more detailed studies would be required to again indicate how the proposed development is feasible on the site. For the land use by law, the applicant meets the applicable criteria of the associated zoning, which again is the Public Service District. This district does not include minimums or maximum parcel areas or widths that the subdivision must be in accordance with. And then lastly, the proposed parcels are have physical access in accordance with the subdivision and development regulations. So moving on to circulation, the Municipal Government Act and the Town's Land Use Bylaw require that the town provide notice of the subdivision application to adjacent landowners. The application package was circulated via regular mail to adjacent landowners on the seventeenth of January. Please note that the land use by law does not define adjacent landowner. The Municipal Government Act defines adjacent land as land that is contiguous to a parcel of land that's being subdivided or redesignated, redesignated being rezoning. This means that those lands directly adjacent to the subject parcel are to be circulated. In this case, in addition, the town actually provided notice for additional landowners within an one hundred and eighty meter radius to provide further opportunities for input. The town determined a need to go above that minimum of the adjacent landowners to provide a broader group to be informed of the process. So a total of fourteen adjacent landowners were sent to circulation package and instructions on the MPC meeting and how to submit comments. Additionally, the application was circulated to internal town departments and external agencies. So the table in the report shows a summary of those comments received, starting with the internal town departments. The town project manager included comments that there will be technical information required to assess the suitability of the land for future development through land use redesignation and development process. So before development can occur on the lot, supporting documents and information shall be prepared to help assess information that could include, but isn't limited to how stormwater is being managed on the site, how connections to servicing is being done, vehicle and pedestrian access, traffic assessments, environmental assessment. We did consult with the internal and external engineer consultants and there were no concerns with deferring these requirements as we do have a development application in front of us. Development is an appropriate stage because at that time we'll have more information as to what's being proposed. For the external circulations, there were no objections received and copies of those responses are attached. For adjacent landowners, they, we did have concerns expressed, including future development impacts, environmental concerns, interface or impacts on neighboring residential areas and just concerns about that transition, pipeline, infrastructure, traffic concerns. I did want to note for M P C today that the concerns provided by the landlords generally relate to the future development of the proposed subdivided site. So at this time, this particular subdivision approval will not permit any development of the site. Should future development be proposed that does not align or isn't supported by the current Public Service District that it's currently zoned, a land use redesignation will be required. And that land use redesignation must also align with the town statutory documents, which would include the municipal development plan. So before development of the site can occur, again, outside of what's supported in the current zoning, the town will require supporting documents and information to be prepared to assess the suitability of land for development. And also, of course, again, to ensure alignment with the town's statutory documents. Lastly, I'll walk us through the analysis and options. The options are to approve the subdivision to create the five acre parcel with the conditions presented to approve with amended conditions to table, and then lastly, to refuse the application. For the analysis, as mentioned, the subject or the subdivision aligns with the requirements of the Public Service District. It does not propose development at this time, ensure alignment with the municipal development plan. It's it is within development authorities discretion to request that further information that was mentioned previously and supporting studies to support a future land use by law amendment to rezone those lands. The lot has access, if development is proposed that does not align with the current zoning, a land use change will be required. And as mentioned previously, before development on the site can occur, the town will require that supporting information, which again could include how the sites being serviced, environmental state of the site, how traffic will be managed, how storm water, storm water management will be prepared and information as the town needs necessary. So the proposed conditions, the proposed conditions of subdivision are, those two first ones are standard. And then the condition about rights of ways are there to ensure that the proper ones are registered on the lot. And this concludes my presentation, happy to take on any questions.
Thank you, Becky. Any comments or questions on the proposal? Yeah, I'm just waiting for everybody to put you to show up so we can see. Mayor Crane, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, guys, I'm doing the old truck meeting today, as you can see. So sorry for dawn in a little bit late there, just had to download the app on the phone. Yeah, I fully support moving ahead with this particular motion. So if someone could read it for me, I'll put that motion on the table for you, Chair Dixon. Uh, Chair Dixon.
I gotta find the motion. I think it's just to approve, right? Motion to approve the subdivision application one dash twenty one S D. To create a new five acre parcel with conditions as presented.
That would be my motion.
Very good, thank you. Any comments or on the motion on the table? Being none, we will take a vote, all in favor of accepting the subdivision application, uh, one dash twenty one S D. Two, three, four. That's good, very good. Thank you. That's passed. Thank you very much. Great. Moving on. Okay, uh, so it includes five, uh, six.
Well, I will excuse myself. I just wanted to say hi to you and have a great day to everyone.
Thank you, Becky. Appreciate your time. Okay, uh, building permit applications, we have none, uh, section seven, variance, uh, patients. Uh, seven point one, Ed, two oh nine Edgar Avenue, uh, variants. Um, who's going to speak on this?
Uh, that's the, uh, Counselor Dixon.
Go ahead.
So, uh, we have, the, the variance two oh nine Edgar Avenue is a, um. Simple variance, uh, where the, the building is at, uh. Has a side setback of one point two nine meters and I'll permit it in the district, uh, which is R two. Is a one point five meter side setback. Um, this is a fourteen percent variance, um. You will see the report, it's a very basic variance, uh, and the recommendation. Uh, from administration is to approve the proposed variance with conditions as presented, the conditions being. Uh, the, that the water drain, um. The water drainage off the building be managed and maintained within the property and shall not be drained into adjoining properties.
Thank you, Bridget. Any comments or questions on the, uh, proposal? Uh, Counselor Holiday, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I'd had my hand up, uh, before we moved on from the last item, um, and Becky had left, um, I'm just wondering. Because a lot of the letters from, uh, neighboring properties had more to do with the next stage. Of this application, not the subdivision. Are those going to be carried forward so people don't have to submit them again or? Can we do anything with that rather than? Just leave it, maybe Sean knows the answer.
My apologies, Counselor Holiday.
Yes, uh, thanks and, uh, Chair Dixon, um, because every process is different, Counselor Holiday. Um, those respondents will be required to resubmit, um, at any further processes that are undertaken on this property. Um, they're certainly welcome to submit the same letter, uh, if, if they so wish. Um, and actually, I have made a commitment to a number of the residents, including Mr. Curly, who is still with us. Um, that I will outline potential future processes. Uh, subject to the subdivision approval, so that there is a broad understanding of what may come next. Uh, potentially could come next, so that, uh, there's a clear picture of what may be in front and what some of the timelines might be involved with those processes. And, uh, already, uh. Offered to Mr. Curly and a few others that if they're ever wanting to discuss it, I'm happy to, you know, happy to meet with them or pick up the phone and have that conversation. So that there's a lot of clarity moving forward. I know it's a very important, uh, project in Mr. Curly's eyes especially, and we're certainly conscious of that.
All right, thank you. Yeah, there was just a few things in there that were, were some really good points that I didn't want lost, so. Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize, Counselor Holiday. I'll, I'll keep an eye on you from now on. Okay, back to the, uh, issue at hands. Uh, so seven point one. Um, looking, any questions or comments on the variance for two oh nine Edgar Avenue? No? Okay, uh, do we need a motion for this to accept it? Somebody give me the motion? Anybody? Counselor Holiday, go ahead.
I can give it to you, but I'm scrolling my, my, I'm not there yet. I'm still going through the last file. Um, but I am happy to accept it with the conditions. Um, I don't know the number because I'm not there yet.
I'm trying to find it too.
So it's on page sixty three of the package, um. It's.
Good. I don't know.
Oh, no, that's the second one. Sorry.
No, it's, um, I, where am I? I'm not seeing. Recommendation, yeah, here we are, um. It's not clear.
Page fifty two?
Um, fifty two, yeah. And options are at the top.
Right.
And recommendation is as per option one.
Oh, it's just a simple, okay, approve the proposed variance with conditions as presented. That's all I need.
And then recommendation below is as per option one, uh, administration recommends that, yeah, I think you're, you got it right.
Okay. We'll take that. We have a motion on the table to accept the, uh. Variants. Any comments or questions? Motion? None, all in favor? That's good, thank you. All right, moving right along. Okay, so seven point two. Uh, variance for three ten McLeod Crescent Southwest. Anyone want to speak on this one?
That's.
Bridget, go ahead.
That's me again, Chair Dixon. So this is, uh, another variance approval for side yard setback. Um, this setback is now in the new land use by law, one point five meters. Uh, the proposed are one point two four meters and one point two one meters. So, uh, just to note that when this development was approved, um, the side setback was one point two two. Meters in this, uh, it was an R one X district. So with the new land use by law, we have the, a lot of situations of non-compliance. Um, that we're going to be facing and, uh, administration hopes that we can, um. Uh, look to the, the variance powers of the development officer, um, in the land use by law to, uh, address some of these. Because they're becoming quite frequent, uh, for the administration to process. And so, uh, the development is simply, uh, or the proposal is simply to vary the side yard. Setback, um, as per the recommendation. Um, two variances, I'm just trying to find that recommendation. Uh, for the seventeen percent variance, uh, from, uh, for the principal building to vary required west side yard setback. From one point five meters to one point two four meters. And for the nineteen percent variance for the principal building to vary the required east side se- yard setback from one point five meters to one point two. Me, two one meters. Um, that is our recommendation.
Thank you, Bridget. Uh, Counselor Holiday, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I want to talk a little bit more about how we changed to the land use by law, and now these are all no longer compliant. Or, because it doesn't seem fair that we would make that change and people have to go through this application process, and I'm hoping they didn't get charged for this because this is. This seems crazy in my mind, um, and I would hope there's some mechanism in which we can just get them all approved, um, going forward. But, um, it sounds like you're working on it, but, um, did these people really get charged for this? I guess is my question.
So CEO Patients, do you have any comment on this topic?
I do. I have probably more than the commission would care to hear. Uh, suffice it to say, obviously, we went back and forth and, uh. Truly did lean on the advice of Urban Systems in this particular issue. Um, we have, or, uh, in conjunction with Urban. Made a significant, or made a listing of numerous issues related to the new land use pilot that need to be rectified. This is one, and I know I've spoken with Ms. McKenzie, who's also, uh, online with us. And we do believe that we can manage these a little differently as we move forward, and I think we're all looking forward to that, and. I do believe there's some L U B amendments that would help us eliminate a lot of red tape involved in some of these applications. Um, we have been compiling the list, and because the land use pilot really is a living document until you. Start utilizing it, you don't find these flaws, but this is definitely a flaw that we need to address. We're cognizant of it. Um, in these cases, we could have simply issued a letter of, uh, legal non-conforming. However, the applicant wanted a compliance stamp on their R P R, which required the variance to come to M P C.
Thank you.
And again, this was at the advice of, uh, Coors at Urban Systems.
Thank you. Anything further? Counselor Holiday, go ahead.
Sorry, Sean, I'm putting you on the hot seat. You didn't answer my question. Did they get charged for this?
Yes, they did. Yes, they did, in fact.
Okay, I'd just like to say I don't think that's right.
Uh, I'm not necessarily saying I disagree with you, Counselor Holiday. Um, but we do have to, we do have to remedy the processes. Unfortunately, we, and it men, as you well know. Are forced to live under the procedures and regulations set forth and in our land use bylaws, so. Um, suffice it to say, we do recognize there's an issue here and we are working to rectify this as soon as we can.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? None, um, can we have the, one motion for both, uh, variances? I think so. Somebody give me a motion to accept the variance.
I'll give you that.
Go ahead.
I'll give you that.
You want me to read it off? So the application, uh, for a seventeen percent variance for the principal building west side yard setback, required one point five meters. Proposed, proposed variance, one point two four meters, and a nineteen percent variance for the principal building east side yard setback. Uh, proposed variance, one point two one meters.
That is my motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any most, any comments or anything on the motions table? See none, all in favor of accepting the motion? We're good, we got past, thank you. Okay. Maybe back to my agenda here, give me one sec. All right, uh, moving on. So we got here. Uh, nothing else under variance applications, section eight confidential closed meetings, we have none. Is there anything further, anybody have anything else to add to the meeting? We are at the end of our agenda. Last chance. Then I am hereby adjourning our meeting of the M P C Committee at ten thirty five A M. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Have a great day.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Have a good day, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Have a great day, everybody.